All right, well, I just would like to welcome us all to the Southborough School Committee Meeting on today, November 6th. As of 6:32 PM, I would like to call us into order. First thing that we're gonna open with tonight on our agenda is any public comment. And seeing as we don't have any public comments right now, we will go straight to new business. For our new business tonight, we're gonna begin with the Principal's Report, which Kathleen Valenti will provide, and Kathleen is joining us remotely. So Kathleen, nice to see and hear from you.
Through the chair.
Nice to, I think I'm seen, nice to be seen.
Yes, Kathleen, can I just-
All right, I'm happy to present our update information of the Principals in Southborough tonight. So I'm gonna start with Finn. In the preschool, staff is actively implementing the focus on early learning integrated curriculum. Recently, they successfully concluded a unit centered on the theme of family. In addition, teachers are working with students on various educational programs, including Higerty, Building Blocks for Math, OWLS-PAWS, which is their social and emotional learning curriculum, and Handwriting Without Tears. And recently, teachers and staff completed a 10-hour professional development series focused on developing early literacy skills, skillfully taught by Nathan Kelton. In the second grade and third grade, students are currently engaged in Module 1 Whiteworth Curriculum. In the fifth grade, students are delving into the fascinating world of the five senses. They are discovering what these senses are and how they help us to make sense of the information in our environment. This foundational knowledge lays the groundwork for their future exploration of scientific concepts. Additionally, students are gaining insights into how writers and artists harness these senses to convey experiences and how readers utilize their senses to process information and learn. In the first grade, students are currently learning about a world of books. Students are diving into the transformative power of reading and changing lives. They engage in reading, discussions, and writing inspired by meaningful tasks. They also explore how children around the world access books from diverse and unique sources, highlighting the life-changing potential that books hold. In the end of Veterans Day this week, our students are dedicating time to learn about the sacrifices made by our veterans to keep our country safe. They are engaging in meaningful discussions and exploring books on the subject. Several teachers have reached out to families with veteran members, and our students are taking the initiative to write letters of appreciation and support, extending their gratitude for the sacrifice made by our veterans.
Thank you, Kathleen. Kathleen?
Yes.
Sorry, I was just gonna interrupt. Greg, would you-
No, I was just going to point out that we are using an owl this evening, so when we speak, we have to really project our voices so that owl actually tracks the conversation. We did use the owl at the Northboro School Committee Meeting, and that's one lesson we learned, that we all need to really speak up for it to work well.
So you, I'll be louder.
You're doing great, thank you.
Well, so I shouldn't scream. Okay. On to Woodward. On Friday, October 27, Woodward students and staff took part in the annual color run. This year, SOS ran the event from start to finish, which was kicked off with a promotional video that starred many of our Woodward staff. A special thank you to Zach Taylor for putting the professional quality video together. The fundraising event exceeded the school-wide goal and raised over $19,000. The money raised will be used for school-wide enrichment programs, field speakers, author visits, class projects, field trips, teacher grants, recess activities, and so much more. A special thank you is in order to our SOS co-chairs Stephanie Iotes and Nea Benoit for putting the event together, and the Army of Parental Volunteer Volunteers who helped the daily run smoothly. On Tuesday, October 31st, Southborough School Resource Officer Julia Fontana joined students and staff for the All Right Assembly to talk about Halloween safety. She revealed that students had to stay safe while out in the community and while trick or treating. In addition to Officer Fontana, Mrs. Weiner, the Woodward Library Media Specials, read There Was An Old Lady Who Swallowed Some Leaves using the novel Fact Dad, which enhances read-alouts with interactive music and sound effects. This week, students will begin the next unit of second-step social-emotional learning curriculum focused on growth mindset and goal setting. Last month, students participated in lessons on bullying prevention. Feedback from staff so far in the program has been positive. Program lessons are engaging and grade-appropriate, and the accompanying videos reinforce the lesson objectives as well. The program is nicely based and allows teachers flexibility to complete a lesson in one class period for over several days, with the opportunity to practice the skills and scenarios. Now onto you. We also had a fun run this past week, October 16, and thank you to our SOS and parent volunteers and families and students who worked so hard to raise over $21,000. This money will go towards field trips, author visits, resources, fifth-grade events, and Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to the SOS Fun Run team and to Trotter for lending us their chat for this amazing event. On Monday, during our weekly staff meeting, local yoga and mindfulness instructor Emma Baranina joined the NAREY staff and led us through mindfulness and shared yoga practices. Teachers have now been reaching out to her to join their individual classrooms, and this is part of our SEL work in connection to our school goals. In partnership with Safe Routes to School and Mass Bike, we had a bike safety education assembly last Friday. They taught our students traffic safety, the rules of the road as a cyclist, and the parts of a bike, and the equipment that should be worn when riding a bike. They will visit us again this spring for a bike rodeo, which is a mentoring way to teach students the rules of the road while practicing safe bicycling skills. Students will be invited to bring their bikes and safety gear to NAREY and practice their skills on the NAREY laptop. Today, we had a Veterans Day Assembly. We read the story America's White Table by Marco Raven. The white table is set in many mess halls and also many restaurants on Veterans Day as a symbol for in remembrance of the service members fallen, missing, or held captive in the line of duty. Solitary and solemn, it is a table where no one will ever sit. In the book, as a special gift to her uncle, the main character Katie and her sisters are asked to set the table, set the white table for dinner. As their mother explains the significance of each item placed at the table, Katie comes to realize and understand and appreciate the depth of sacrifice that her uncle, also a veteran, and each member of the armed forces and their families may be called to give. We also introduced our Random Acts of Kindness, Random Acts of Crochet Kindness, partnership with the Senior Center. Students who are interested will work with Mrs. Johnson to learn how to crochet small items, such as animals, flowers, and ideas that they were choosing, with a note attached that says, "I am not lost and just alone. If I made you smile, please take me home, or you could share me again so I can roll." These crocheted items and the little card will be placed at local businesses and community areas, and we ask when someone finds a crocheted item to please take a picture of the item, and we'll be posting them on the NAREY website. And finally, this afternoon, we had our first school council meeting up here, where we discussed an important part of our work this year, which will be the reauthorization of our school improvement. We did it to parents and staff who are on our school council for this year. And finally, Trotter hosted its first dance of the year last week with over 250 students attending and 10 teachers volunteering as chevrons. It was a great night to see so many students come out and enjoy their time together. School Resource Officer Julia Fontana visited our eighth-grade students to have an important discussion about their digital footprint and its impact on their physical and psychological safety, as well as the legal consequences of making poor choices with electronic devices. Given that our students use technology on a daily basis, it's crucial for them to understand the potential risks and consequences associated with their online activity. The goal of the session was to educate students on various aspects of maintaining a responsible digital footprint, including protecting personal information, privacy settings, appropriate online behavior, and the long-term implications of their actions on social media. This year at Trotter Middle School, we will administer the Grade 8 Civics Field Test in the spring. Trotter will be assigned one of the following questions of the assessment. Topic 1, the philosophical foundations of the United States political system. Topic 2, the development of the United States government. Topic 3, the institution of the United States government. Topic 4, rights and responsibilities of citizens. Topic 5, the Constitution, amendments, and the Supreme Court decisions. Topic 6, structure of the Massachusetts State and Local Government. And Topic 7, freedom of the press and news media literacy. This will be the first time Trotter has been a part of this. And finally, our eighth-grade team is preparing for our Washington DC and Boston Freedom Field Trips that will take place next week. With those for our updates, any questions?
Any questions from anyone on the table? Roger? I have a question, Kathleen. I'm gonna try to project, but I didn't hear the last part when you were giving the NAREY update about reauthorization.
Oh, the reauthorization of our school improvement plan. So we are in year three of our school improvement plan, and this is the year that we'll be working on examining our goals, looking at our data, looking at the strategic plan of the district, and making decisions of what goals we want for our next school improvement plan, what have we accomplished, what do we hope to accomplish. So it involves not only our school council, but also our staff and the Principals work collaboratively as well, because we'll all be engaging in this process.
And I have a final question around Trotter, the civics exam. What, and maybe Greg might know if you don't know, what triggered us to participate? Or is it like a state determined?
So it was planned at the state level, so eighth grade and 10th grade, so this is the first year the assessment will be administered. So it wasn't as if we were randomly selected, it's all eighth grades across the Commonwealth.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. I can move on to the next item on the agenda. For what we have planned next, that presenter, would you, would someone else like to present, or we can move on to the third item, which is the food services?
Sure, so we have Keith LaVoy, who will be leading Food Services Study. And Keith will give an update of where we are in terms of established in the study group and the goals. Keith?
Yes, thank you, Greg, and thank you for the opportunity to participate remotely. It is very exciting. The district is launching a Food Services Study Group to engage the K-8 community in a quality conversation about food services and what we can do next. So specifically, the district does recognize the need to enhance the food services offerings as part of our commitment to students' health and wellness. And the real main goals of this study group is to examine the current menu options and explore options moving forward, especially for our diverse student body, also to increase participation rates for our students in K-8, and to involve the Food Services Department with our health and wellness. We know the link is there, we'd like to make that even stronger, and certainly to capitalize on any community partnerships that might be able to be established. So we are looking forward to it. I have been able to reach out to a number of community members, and we have secured parents from each community, as well as a student from each community. Both Trotter and Melikan will have student representation on the study group, as well as myself and Kyle Parson and Mary Ellen Duggan, and we'll certainly be having school committee members as well, but I haven't confirmed that yet with Greg, so I don't want to overcommit to a meeting now, but maybe Greg can film it right there. But we are excited. It was just finalized as of this afternoon, the roster of people that will be part of it, and I look forward to sending out an invitation for our first meeting. So it's gonna be exciting work that we embark on, and I will have periodic reports for the committee as we navigate the school year.
Thank you, Keith. Do we have any questions or comments for Keith?
Yeah, can I ask a question? Mr., so who are the members of the study group?
There is gonna be one member of the Northboro School Committee, one member from the Southboro School Committee, our Food Services Manager, Kyle Parson, our District Wellness Coordinator and Nurse Leader, Mary Ellen Duggan, myself, a Northboro parent, a Southboro parent, a Northboro student, and a Southboro student to round out the group. So we are pretty well there with a total of eight members.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Keith. Will this include breakfast as well?
Yes, it will.
Another, if I could chime in, what about tapping some of our resources and maybe even community members that specialize in this area around? And maybe even have a background in terms of, we have some, what do you call it? The farms where you can do like a CSA, so someone that both has the like understanding of the logistics of getting food from organization to table, but also understands or is trained in the health aspects of the different, you know? So I know that Mary Ellen brings that, the wellness and her nursing experience, but someone like with a food science background might be, yeah.
We have been able to capitalize that with one of the members, but that's actually one of the goals, is to really formulate some of those community partnerships and do some outreach as needed, to make sure we do get the expertise input as we go and get some action items that will come from the study group. So I believe that's gonna be, you know, part of maybe the first or second meeting that we have, Kamali, is to try to strategize towards that.
Okay, good to hear.
Can I, I'll just comment too. Our thinking is that the study group will be eight members, but there'd be a lot of opportunities to have focus groups, whether it's student focus groups, community focus groups, around a variety of topics. And I think too, we've had great success at asking experts in our community to join our work and provide value, so I think, Kamali, your idea around nutritionists, chefs, who can really provide a layer of expertise to what we're trying to accomplish is an excellent idea, something that we've talked about.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to see the results of this. I think it'd be a great example for our students to see the impact of what, you know, their involvement can lead to. We saw that with the field at Algonquin, we saw that with the naming convention and the materials that are there, so I think this could also be a great story as well.
Yeah, I would agree. I would say that out of all the membership that I've been in touch with so far, the students are probably the most excited, which is great to see, and they're looking forward to getting started. In fact, they thought the first meeting was gonna be this week, and I'm like, you have to hold your horses a little bit, we gotta get organized. So there's definitely some good momentum and excitement around it, and I am looking forward to it.
Anything else? Okay, so next on our agenda is a legislative update.
So just a quick update around the MAS-C/MASSS Conference that begins, I believe, tomorrow afternoon and runs through Friday. There are-
Yeah, this week.
This, this week. So there are resolutions that the Mass Association of School Committees will be voting on. I think in particular, there are several transportation resolutions that we'll keep an eye on closely, and I'm looking forward to networking with other school committees during the conference and other superintendents, just to talk about transportation and what's working well and what challenges they're facing. So those are some of the legislative areas that we'll be focused on in the next couple of days.
As we, like, I have a question. So as we kind of approach voting season, are there some other areas that you, that may impact us as a school district that you know maybe we want to keep a close eye on in terms of funding? It could be, you know, just other regulations?
Yeah, I think there are a couple. I think the first, MSBA, really, there's some advocacy around continuing with accelerated repair program, which it paused last year. So that is how we accomplish many of our projects, such as roofs, HVAC systems. So there is a proposal to lift the $800 million cap on funding to MSBA to expand its program, so that's something we're keeping an eye out on. And then the other, some of the other initiatives or legislation around budgets, there is some legislation around transportation. It doesn't immediately impact Southboro pre-K through 8, it does impact the high school, allows the high school who receives regional transportation to try to make up the difference of what's not funded by the state. So the state made a commitment to fund regional transportation 100%. It's typically around 75 to 85% reimbursement, and there's a mechanism in the legislation that will allow the regional school system to make up the difference. And I think that overall impacts the Northboro pre-K through 8 and the Southboro pre-K through 8 districts. So those are two. In terms of budgets, I think it's very early in terms of the budget. I think we are watching revenue projections at the state level to see how they're falling. They've been below projections, so that is something we're keeping an eye on. But I do believe the state has an eight or nine million, billion dollar rainy day fund, which is significant.
I'll move on to our next topic on the agenda, which is approval of our Nature's Classroom Field Trip.
Sure, so a longstanding tradition is to have the grade six students attend the Nature's Classroom Field Trip, so that is taking place this fall. What's in your packet as a proposal, or seeking approval for next year's field trip for the fall of '24? And Principal Herschek provided kind of an outline of the, of the field trip, and the reason why we're bringing it to you this evening is that they book the year in advance, and we do have the contract, and they're looking for us to sign the contract. So with a positive vote of the school committee, this would allow me to execute the contract, saving a spot for Trotter sixth graders in the fall.
Anyone have any questions about the field trip?
Yes, go ahead. I think this is a great program, so I'm very supportive of it. My question is around the financial aspect, so you're committing to something that I presume will be in the FY '25 budget, but you're paying, and you have to pay the deposit June 1st, so just how, can you walk me through?
Sure, so we're just signing the contract, so the contract secures us, and then the funds would, as you indicated, would be in the FY '25 budget. It is a fee-based field trip as well, so there is a fee that parents pay that subsidizes the overall cost, and also I believe there's also a partnership, and Keith, correct if I'm wrong, with SOS providing scholarships.
Yes, it is correct, Greg.
So how do we pay for the 10%? Where does the 10% come from?
They just want a commitment from us. We have a, we're a longstanding commitment with this. They just want us to execute a contract, they're not looking for us to pay anything in advance.
Oh, so you don't actually pay the 10% deposit on June 1st?
No.
So that's what the contract is.
Correct.
Okay. So, okay.
We have, we've been doing this for many decades, and we've had, we built that relationship, but they know that we're going to meet our commitments.
I was, I was just gonna add, Greg, that what actually happened is, we did have a conversation with Nature's Classroom, and they do understand that by state finance, while we aren't able to pay for goods or services that have not been received, so they do allow us to submit a purchase order so that they do know that, and also sign the contract, so that they do know that we are coming, but we do not need to make that deposit.
I have a follow-up to Chelsea's question about the expense, how we pay for it. I would, I'm guessing that our typical contract, since we're signing something that's not really in the year that the funds will be appropriated, probably has some kind of clause that says, you know, this is contingent on funds being appropriated. I think most of the, most municipal, that fair?
So we have, we did have legal counsel look over the contract in prior years. I think that it does commit us to at least the deposit portion of this, we canceled. We've not had to cancel, so we can look, we can get more information around what that would look like.
It does say if the school cancels prior to the arrival at the host site, the deposit will be 100% refundable. So I assume that we're, if town meeting doesn't approve the amount, then you're canceling. Or parents and SOS are-
Correct.
-coming up with an alternative.
So I will accept a motion to approve the contract for the Nature's Classroom Field Trip for fall of 2024. So, okay.
Is this the signing of the contract we're voting on, basically?
It's approval of the field trip, which would allow us to execute the contract, sign the contract.
Chelsea moves.
Roger second.
Any discussion, revisions, comments? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote, Roger?
Yes.
You don't issue your roll call. Okay, 'cause we're all here.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you.
Principal Herschek will be very, very pleased, he's been pressuring us.
We also want to move on to the approval of grants and donations. There's been a donation of three competition tables from the Eagles, one of our Eagle Scout candidates, Sean Mabley. So do, does anyone talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so we have at Trotter our design engineering class, so they do participate in the first robotics competitions, where they build robots, program robots, and then there's competition tables. So the Eagle Scout candidate built three competition tables for us to use in that class, so it's a great value to us, and they'll be well-used, so we're very appreciative.
Well, I think that's amazing. So, and that student that built it, he is Trotter student himself or high schooler?
High schooler.
Okay, 'cause Eagle Scout H, okay. That's awesome. Any comments or questions? Do you know when the next competition is?
I don't, I can find out from Gary, and they also-
December 9.
December 9.
Oh, excellent.
Hot off the press.
Okay. That would be great to see Mr. Sean Mabley there, and then also the students from the team using the tables, yeah. Roger? Roger?
Well, this is just a side, but I, I would like to say that after, I don't know how many school committee meetings I've attended. So as I think back, I can't pinpoint certain things that occurred in certain meetings. But I'll always remember the sixth grade middle school student that brought the robot that could solve a Rubik's Cube in front of us all. So robotics is pretty exciting.
Yep, absolutely.
Like I said, it wasn't particularly tremendous, but
It left an impression.
It left an impression.
So I think on that positive note, I will accept a motion to approve the donation of these competition tables from our Eagle Scout valued at approximately two seventy-seven and twenty-seven cents. So moved. So moved by Chelsea, second by Zini. All in favor? That's unanimous. So we approve. Thank you.
And we will send a letter on behalf of the committee thanking Eagle Scout for his donation.
At this time, we move on to MSBA update.
That would be me.
Or we can jointly.
Why don't I take a, I'll take a shot at it and please correct all my mistakes. Since I am, let's see, so I'm on the committee, I'm on the Designer Selection Subcommittee and the Communications Subcommittee. So we've had a number of meetings since our last school committee meeting. The I guess the, the Nere Building Committee itself did meet October thirtieth. We had a, we had a designer subcommittee, I'm sorry, we had a communications subcommittee meeting on October twentieth. And we had a Designer Selection Subcommittee meeting on October twenty-fifth. That might be the most interesting one to talk about because I think at the, at the Communications Subcommittee, I was really reviewing a draft communication plan and there's another meeting coming up on the seventh next week. So the Designer Selection process has so far received four architectural firms' bids. The firms are Arrow Street, Studio G Architects, Raymond Design Associates, and Lamerol Pagano Associates. We asked the, you know, the owner's project manager how he felt about getting that number of bids. He said he was hoping for one or two more, but there's some, there's at least one very large competing project that's going on that really caused us maybe not to have quite as many as he would have liked. However, he did say, they, they did say, I mean, he's speaking for the project manager team, did say that he thought we had four quality firms that could all do excellent jobs. So that's where we are. So far, the, the project manager, his team, and that team, Skanska, who's the project manager, they have evaluated, they have, they've put together a number of, some summary information. They provided that to the committee last week. And at our next meeting, this is the Designer Subcommittee, Selection Subcommittee, which is going to be the thirteenth, so that's next Monday. We're going to review the, the project manager's documents and then try to get to work on reading the proposals, which are pretty comprehensive. Skanska, again, the project manager, is going to do the reference checks. We had a discussion about whether, how to do those, whether or not we would, did we would separate those? We'd have committee members maybe do one firm and maybe do one question, okay? But it was felt that to basically have everything kind of handled in the same way, it was really better to have the project manager go ahead and do those reference checks. And then any of the committee members has the opportunity to do another check or however they'd like to approach that. The meeting with the MSBA to choose the designer is December fifth. The process is that, and that's a virtual meeting, the process is that we have two votes. And MSBA has eight votes. Am I correct?
I think it's a twelve-member, twelve-member committee.
So it's ten?
We have two votes out of the twelve.
So we have ten votes? So we, we have a, we do not have a high percentage of the, of the decision. However, historically, at least according to our project manager, our selection is weighed very, very heavily by the MSBA. They, however, are going through a parallel process without any communication with us, where they're also reviewing the same four bids that were submitted and evaluating them on their own. So I think the next key date for us is, as far as the architect, as far as the designer, is, is next Monday. Next key date, and I think I mentioned the date already, is, is the Communications Subcommittee. And that's going to meet this week. So what, what would you like to add?
No, I think that was summarized well. I was, the only thing I would add is the Nere Building Committee is organized into three subcommittees. So we have communications, financial, and designer selection. So each of those subcommittees are, are working on a task, which Roger just outlined. The Designer Selection Subcommittee will finish its work in December and then we will join other subcommittees as members. So I think it's well organized. People are working hard. I think we are where we're supposed to be in terms of the overall progress.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
So how many people are in the Designer Subcommittee?
Three.
So how do you get two votes at MSBA? Are you gonna vote and then take, and just have two votes on December fifth? Or how does that work?
So we as the, as the district, if you will, we get two votes. I would imagine, I don't know this because I can't predict what will happen, that we will be in agreements on who we would like the MSBA to pick.
Okay.
So we will, so this is, so I believe it's likely that we will have two votes for one, for a firm.
Okay.
Otherwise, our votes would carry even less weight if we're, if we're split.
And I might add, Roger, I think the Designer Selection Subcommittee will do its work, make a, study the four proposals, will convene the Nere Building Committee, have a conversation, get some direction, and then the two, two voting members will then, at the MSBA meeting, will represent the Nere Building Committee's selection.
Yeah, I think the, the, and I don't think it actually makes any difference who the voting members are.
No.
But I think that, that I'll be one as the school committee. And who is the other one? I should have it in my notes. Is it, no, is it Jason?
It might be me.
It might be you. That's right.
But we're not, we're still working out the details.
Right. And we will be taking, well, four people into that virtual meeting. A representative of the, the executive of the town, which means a representative of the, of the select board, probably Mark Purple. And I think we'd be, are we taking?
So we have, yeah, so the, I think just Jason Malanowski is the only other person.
And Jason?
Yeah.
As the chair of the, of the, the building committee. So you have half of it here and then, you know, one quarter of it and Mark's the other one.
From what you described, the cadence of the meeting seems really good and like how it's separated for the three different, like, subcommittees. Do you anticipate that they will, like, have a communication, a summary, let's say, posted on the website before the vote has been made? I've seen Jason as a chair do that very well in the past for big decisions that we're making. Like, this is the information I received, this is, and it will, like, at least sit, right? So that if anyone does read it, they can offer some, an email or a phone call feedback before some, a vote is made by this small subcommittee?
Well, I think that Greg did a good job of, of making sure that I hadn't misled you. The actual decision on the designer is the building committee's. So the subcommittee can make its recommendation, but the building committee will actually make the decision
Got it.
of, and of which Jason's the chair. I suspect that, so the Communications Subcommittee is me, Jason.
Denise.
Stephanie.
Stephanie.
Ex officias are Stephanie, Steve Bucci, and Kathleen. I think Steve will be voted tomorrow, tomorrow to join that committee at the communications meeting.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, this
I think the communications meeting, the second meeting's tomorrow, I believe.
Oh, yes, okay. But the actual, the subcommittee is really Jason, Denise
And you.
And me. Okay.
No, that, that, that's helpful. I understand now, right?
I think
But there, I think communication, there will be communication on this. Absolutely. So that, I mean, because
Yeah, I think that's the, the, where the communication, because I did attend one of the meetings. The Communications Subcommittee is really thinking about the framework to communicate all, everything that's happening. From the minutes of the subcommittees to minutes of the Nere Building Committee meetings. I think what we'll see is once a designer, a design, designer is selected, you'll start seeing a cadence of, of much more work and communications. Roger, would you agree that right now we're kind of framing the communication plan so that when we really start moving forward, we have a good structure? We have a website, we have a way to communicate to the larger committee and community?
We really don't have much to communicate right now. So, so it's, it's really kind of building the communication process or, and the communication capability on the websites, et cetera. So stay tuned, I guess. When was it? Wednesday? I think one, one or the other, we're meeting on Wednesday. And again, the, I don't know that we have a date set yet for the building committee, the next building committee meeting. I don't think, I, I'm not aware that that date has been set, but that's gonna obviously occur sometime in the next thirty days after these two subcommittees meet.
Is anything else going to be decided at the MSBA meeting or is it just the architect selection?
Well, I would think there would be some discussion about the communication. I don't, it's, it's, I think there's been some decisions made on, on finance. It's the committee I'm not on. But there's been some decisions made about how we will process bills and things like that and the, the limits that are required for certain people to, you know, move those bills through. But other than, other than the, the project manager, we don't really have, we don't really have any bills yet. I mean, that's not gonna get, that's, that's not gonna get moving until we, you know, we get a lot further down the road.
And I would say, Roger, that the MSBA meeting scheduled in December is solely to pick a designer.
Okay.
So from that point, once the MSBA board selects a designer, then we execute the contract and then we and our owner's project manager, Skanska, then starts working with our designer to, to move the process forward. So as you, as Roger indicated, I would imagine things will start to pick up in January.
Okay.
And as, and as, I guess folks that have been through this selection process before know, well, this isn't exactly the same, we won't be, we actually won't be ranking even the, the designers. We're just gonna hopefully recommend one, okay? But, but we're not, we're not allowed to really rank them. The designer is chosen without regard to cost for the first step. And this is not, this is, this is, I mean, this is ordinary as far as many of these, these selection processes are concerned. At that point in time, there'll be, you know, a contract negotiation process. Hopefully, that will turn out to be successful. If it's not, then we go back. And that, by that point in time, I think we will have ranked them, right? The MSBA will have ranked them. So that, by that point in time, we'll go to number two.
Well, the good news here is the MSBA update is usually a standing update we have on the agenda. So, you know, what we learn in December versus January, you'll continue to keep us up to date there. So I'll, I'll segue into the superintendent's report to the committee. And Greg, I'll leave it up to you if every, anyone wants to continue or if any folks want to.
So Becky and Keith don't have a choice. They have to continue.
Excellent.
And I believe Principal Valente has signed off.
Okay.
So I think we are in good shape. And so, yes, so the superintendent's report will begin with enrollments. So in your packet is the October one enrollment. That is an important enrollment in terms of foundation enrollment for budgets. So that's something that we share with the town and work through in terms of what our enrollment is as of October one. There are really no significant variances from our October one projections, which we had projected. And then also in your packet is the Nezdek enrollment projections. So we use Nezdek to look out three to five to ten years in terms of what enrollment trends we'll see. The school committee also engaged RLS demographers two years ago to also do a parallel enrollment report. What we're finding is that, that RLS demographers projections are a little more accurate than Nezdek. But I would say they're fairly close. They're not, they're not so far off in terms of their projections. What you will notice if you look at the Nezdek enrollment projections, and we also see this with RLS, that from two thousand four, thirteen and fourteen to two thousand twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-three, twenty-four, we saw a ten percent decrease in enrollment in K through eight. When we look at the next ten years, twenty-three, twenty-four to thirty-three, thirty-four, we'll see a ten percent increase. So we'll actually, we'll be back to where we were in thirteen, fourteen. We also, when we did contract out with RLS to look at enrollment trends and projections, they used a different methodology. So they looked at birth rates as did Nezdek, they looked at fertility rates. They also looked at mobility. So the mobility of people in the community. They looked at real estate sales as well. So we feel like RLS has a real good foundation for us to build on and those are the projections we've been using for thinking about building projects and a long-term planning. And be happy to answer any questions about the Nezdek enrollment report. And be happy to answer any questions about the Nezdek enrollment report, um, or the October one enrollments.
Uh, Chelsea?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. Um, so is there a reason why we're not using RLS and we, like, we're having Nezdek do? I guess I don't know the cycle of.
Yeah, so we, so historically, we have, um, we, we are members of Nezdek. So as part of the membership, we get this, these enrollment projections. Um, so we will continue to use Nezdek. And, um, I think we'll be reaching out to RLS periodically, maybe every two years to update enrollment projections from, from RLS. What we've been doing is we've been using the RLS tables and adding information to the tables to get more, um, accurate projections in the short term.
Okay.
I think the long-term projections still hold from RLS at this point.
So would you intend on using our, engaging with RLS again before? Like, just thinking about what we're doing with Neri and kind of like that path, are, like, are you thinking sooner rather than later for?
Yeah.
Making sure that we're on track?
I think within, within a year.
Okay.
You know, we confirm, confirm the anticipated enrollment. MSBA also has, um, verified enrollment projections, um, using RLS, using Nezdek.
Okay.
So they, they have that information. Um, but I think engaging in every other year makes sense.
Okay.
And then, just to like provide some history there, um, either last year or the year before last, um. We had the opportunity to hear from them. I don't know if you, um, if you knew about that.
Yeah.
And as we learned the calculation methods and saw all of that. It, as a school board, it kind of gave us, um. You know, some, uh. Uh, helped us understand why concatenating it with the RLS information was helpful for Southborough and Northborough and Southborough School System. What other districts that are members of them do, that's up to them. But for our own purposes, once we started to like. Understand the calculations and how they did it, um, there was like firm reason why we said, no, we need to combine this.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yes, Roger.
Um, just to add to Kamali's comment about having the second firm, when we, um. When we, when we first engaged RLS, which was. Four or five years ago, perhaps, three or four, I'm, I'm.
Uh, thanks, I think.
Twenty nineteen.
So my view is that as much as they use a lot of science. To come up with these projections, I, I actually think this is. Not a small part art and not specifically science. And to have, um, a second opinion. Is, is, um, I think it's dangerous not to have one, at least periodically. And even with RLS, the first projections we got from them were quite a bit different in Nezdek. So I, we, we went back, we had a discussion and I think that, uh, I think they got to know us a little bit. So I think it's, it's actually good to have a firm that, that knows your demographics and things, uh. So I, I think having the second opinion at least on occasion, without too much of time in between, I think it's, it'll serve us well.
And I think what precipitated searching for another, um, firm to work with for our demographics and our enrollment data. Is that Nezdek's original report, we asked them to kind of re-study the community of Southborough. The results were, um, we felt overinflated, but had no data to support that. So we actually, that's why we, um, consulted with another demographer. I think as a result of that work, each, each Nezdek and RLS actually became better.
Mm-hmm.
At, um, their projections. So I think Nezdek became better.
Mm-hmm.
I think we had, we gained more confidence and RLS, I think. We gained co, confidence as we moved through the process.
It wasn't a secret from either one of them that we were.
Going to the other.
Uh, sourcing at, at least other information.
Mm-hmm.
And I think what was validating is MSBA, as you enter the eligibility phase, they look at enrollment and they certify enrollment. So. They took all of our enrollment studies and, and verified and, um, we'll be using that to move forward. But again, if this is a successful building project, we're looking at a building potentially, um, three to five years out. So. We can't get it wrong. We can't overbuild a school or underbuild a school. So. Um, I'm sure along the way, there'll be many more conversations around, are we still on target?
Yeah. But I think with a ten percent shift every ten years, right? You have to build it so that you can be flexible to deal with that. Even look at the, the difference in the grades right now.
Yeah.
You've got, you've got forty kids. That's a whole class plus, you know? So I think, I think there, I mean. It makes a big difference when you're dealing with, you know, a hundred to a hundred and fifty kids, right? If you're dealing with. Much larger gr, you know, kids in a school system, it's not as big of a deal, but I think here it is.
Agreed.
I agree.
All right. So, um, if there are no other questions about enrollments, so, um, just wanted to provide an update on the mold mitigation at Finn School. So. Um, we continue to, uh, work at Finn in terms of making sure that, um. We have climate-controlled, um, options for Finn, air conditioning and dehumidification. Currently, we're fortunate, we're heading into, we're heading into the winter months, so, um, we don't have some of the same issues that we do. Late spring, summer, uh, and early fall in terms of controlling the climate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that is something we're, we're moving forward with and working with our contractors to get that accomplished. And we're also looking at, um, the perimeter drains. So we did have, um, our perimeter drains looked at by a professional. Um, they, they have some recommendations that we still have to, um, have a further conversation around adding perimeter drains. The portions of Finn School. So that is something that we're looking into. And also power washing and sealing the building. Um, that is a recommendation that we will be moving forward with. That, uh, most likely will, will not take place this fall. Um, our consultant has recommended that we do that in the spring. The last thing we want to do is. Is create an, another, uh, moisture issue. Um, so she's recommending that we power wash the building in the spring. Let it dry properly and then actually seal the, the masonry and the con, and the concrete around the building. So that is what will take place. Um, but for this evening, we just wanted to review with the committee the financial impact today. Um, regarding the mold mitigation efforts that have taken place. And we have Becky Palgrina who will provide an update.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, so when the mold mitigation process began at Finn. We compiled a list of items or services that we knew would need to be purchased. Um, and as you can see from the report that was provided in the packet. Um, we estimate that the total amount required for the mitigation efforts is in the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. Um, so far, we have expended just under ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, the majority of these funds have been paid through the operational budget. Uh, the exception to that are the replacement classroom supplies. And then we are also going to be purchasing some new rugs for classrooms and we will be utilizing S R three funds for those purchases. Um, we have previously shared with the committee that we filed a claim with our insurance provider. Um, an adjuster did visit Finn School a couple of weeks ago and we are waiting to get more information from Maya on the status of our claims. Um, the report does show that some of the expenses that we incurred, um, include air scrubbers and dehumidifiers. Um, we also had the cleaning of the building by both Northborough and Southborough facility staff and an outside contractor. Um, as I mentioned, we replaced supplies from the book room, um, as well as, um, we had an inspection of our drains. And we contracted with Hub Testing, our environmental consultant, to help us through this process. Um, the air conditioner purchase and the installation of the French drain that Greg just mentioned. We will need to go through a procurement process for that, but those are really, will be the next steps, um, in the mitigation, uh, measures right now. Um, we have also encumbered, uh, and that is not reflected on this report, but you will see it on the monthly general fund report in a few minutes. Um, an additional seventy-five thousand, um, just in case there are some other expenses. Um, and it would also include the air conditioner and the French drain purchases.
Questions?
Any questions?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Did you have one first?
Uh, yeah. Oh, thank you. Um, for the line item that talks about rug replacement and cleaning. Um, anyone just thought of like removing the rugs? For eleven K, what about just not having rugs in the classrooms? Uh, like permanent standing rugs, they could just be. You know, for that particular activity, there is a, something that gets rolled out and then put.
I can speak to that. So, um, for youngest learners, having rugs in classrooms is really important.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that we did have that conversation with Clayton and faculty and staff. And they feel strongly, and I support, um, this, that we have classroom carpets.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that one of the conversations we're having internally is how do we, how do we maintain and clean those carpets on an annual basis? Um, making sure that in the summer months when they're not used, we have a storage method for those carpets. So I think we're. We're honing our internal protocols, um, but really feel it's, it's really part of the classroom environment to have.
Mm-hmm.
Classroom rugs in spaces where kids can gather.
Mm-hmm. Good, good to hear. Um, Roger?
Uh, just want to understand the numbers a little bit more. I, when I first looked at this, my first reaction was, wow. Great job. The cost is well under the estimates. And then I realized that there's a number of these. Number of the rows that haven't been filled in yet, okay? And when you start, um, so it's still like, seems like a great job. When you, when you, Becky, when you say that. Uh, you're encumbering an additional seventy-five thousand dollars, I, I'm not adding those correctly, so I'm missing something. There's. We've spent low under a hundred, we have a hundred and fifty estimated. Which is this, where does the seventy-five come from?
So the seventy-five is not reflected on this report, um, that the seventy-five we have, um, encumbered in our operational budget on the, um. The Finn Maintenance of Buildings account, just so that we would have the additional money. As you can see, the air conditioner. Um, and the French drains, right? That's about forty thousand right there. Um, and so then the additional thirty-five would give us a little bit of breathing room. In case something else, um, was, uh, made known to us that we needed to purchase or we needed to correct.
Okay, so your estimate for purposes of estimating is, is seventy-five in addition to the ninety-four?
I, I would, yeah. I would say it's, we're still looking at that one fifty range, but we have set, uh, you know, the additional twenty-five thousand aside. Again, in case of emergency.
That's good.
So Rod, Roger, I'll just add too, that when we first learned that, um, there was an issue at Finn School. And that is when we made a decision to encumber the seventy-five thousand dollars based on past experience in Northborough.
Yeah.
It was a precautionary measure, um, because we had an estimate, we had a, a sense of how much it would cost. I think to, to Becky's point earlier, we are waiting for, uh, insurance, uh, to, to hopefully offset some of these costs. We have not had a conversation yet with the town around these were unanticipated costs. That, um, we could not have predicted, um, are there any funds at the town level that could provide relief? Last year's school budget was three point five percent increase over F I twenty-three, which totaled a little bit over seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So. A hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is significant. In the overall budget increase that we, that was allocated to the district. And we don't have emergency reserves for these types of events. We, we budget. It, what it means is there are things we're not doing that we budgeted to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that we are, we are not doing because of the mold mitigation.
So if I, if I might to.
Go ahead.
So I remember when we discussed insurance at the last meeting initially.
Mm-hmm.
Is this the town insurance?
Correct.
Okay, it's the town insurance. What's the deductible on the insurance? Do you know offhand, Becky?
Deductible, Becky?
I don't know offhand. I would say it's probably about five thousand.
Oh, really? That's, uh, that's a pretty small number.
Surprising.
Could we?
Confirm that?
Yeah, thank you.
I will.
Thank you. All right, Chelsea has a follow-up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so worst-case scenario, we don't get any money from, from insurance. So what are, what are the next steps and is one of them? To be, to go to town meeting in March and ask for an increase in the current year budget? Cause I think some of these we have to get resolved. Now and not impact things that need to happen within this operational budget. I mean, this is a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Of, and, and I don't know what we're not doing.
Yeah.
Um, but that isn't good either.
No, and if you look at, um, a percent of our budget is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, this is about a half a percent. The way we do operate the budget, when you have the, the size of budget we have. We're, we're talking about a half a percent of it. So it is, it is a lot, but at the same time, in terms of how we manage and, and monitor our budget. There are things that, that happen. For example, hiring people, um, that we anticipated costing more than, than it really did. So there's some. There's some savings there. I think the next step in terms, I think the next step is really to wait for, to hear back from insurance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if we do not, if we do not get a claim, then it's having a conversation with, um. The Mark Purple and the Select Board. I think they have the ability, and this is what happened in Northborough. Um, when there was a mold mitigation effort, the town actually, um, provided money to the district. As a result of these, these mitigating efforts that took place. So the town in Northborough, for example, from the town funds gave two hundred thousand dollars to, to cover the expenses of mold mitigation. I would imagine that something similar would happen. I don't foresee us going back to the, the, um. Voters and asking for amended budget increase.
Yeah, okay. Well, then you're waiting till March anyways.
Yeah.
So then you're.
Roger, go ahead.
Is that even possible?
Yes.
Um, to, to be in a March town meeting and say, we're trying to encumber money for this fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay, we've, we've ever done that?
Not to my knowledge. We talked about it.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's ever been done. Um.
Mm-hmm.
I.
The, the town does have free cash and I think that's where we would probably try to work.
Or a reserve fund.
Reserve fund, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, that would be advisory.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think what's frustrating is that, you know, this is a signi, significant amount of money. When we look at the budget priorities as an example. Mold mitigation isn't really investment for us. It's not like we're getting, I mean, we're getting a safe, a safer building for students, which is essential if we. Um, but it feels like, you know, we're, we're spending this money. The result isn't necessarily new positions, new programming, new resources. Um, so the goal is to prevent this from happening again, so we don't have, we don't have this challenge ever again.
Greg, if you could take us into the, um, monthly general, oh, Becky, uh, the monthly general fund expenditure report?
So if we have Becky do the monthly general fund expenditure report, the S R funding and revolving accounts?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so the, um, Southborough operational budget continues to hold steady. Uh, as of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, we have three hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Or one point seven percent remaining on the bottom line. This amount is down from last month when we had five hundred thousand, forty-two dollars remaining. And then at the same time last year, we had seven hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars or three point three three percent. Um, as you will see on page seven of the monthly general fund report, under account number four two two zero, which is the maintenance of buildings. Um, that is where you'll find that Finn's line item is one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars over budget. Um, and as we just talked about, that figure does. dollars over budget. And as we just talked about, that figure does include not just the expenses that have already been paid out, but it does include that seventy-five thousand dollars that we had encumbered. At this time, we are watching the budget very closely, and, and the mold is really the biggest thing that we're paying the closest attention to, but I do not have any concerns to report to the committee tonight. Molly, I don't know if you want to take a vote before I move on?
Yes, I can do that. Let me just, so, yep, questions. Zee has a question.
Yeah, I was going to ask a question about the mold mitigation expense table. I happen to notice it's a manual issue, but at the bottom, the, the bookroom supplies, a thousand six hundred dollars. I don't think that's included in, in the total amount at the bottom. I mean, it's not a big difference, but I assume just a, just a calculation error.
And that would kind of?
I'll check my formula on that, sorry.
That would clarify what Roger was asking earlier, like he didn't see the math. Okay, thank you, Zee.
Yeah.
So on the feedback or the update that you shared with us for the monthly general fund expenditure report, I'll take a vote to approve the FY twenty-four general fund expenditure report as is until audited.
So moved?
So moved by Roger. And second by Zee. All in favor? We have unanimous. So now Becky, you can go onto the Essar and revolving fund report.
Great, thank you. In terms of Essar three, we really have not expended very much compared to where we were at the end of, the end of September, excuse me. As of October thirty-first, we do have twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars remaining on that line item. We are planning to spend about eleven thousand of that on the classroom rugs for Finn. And we do have until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four to fully expend our Essar fund grants. And then finally, in terms of the facility rental and the extended day program revolving accounts. As you can see, with the facility rental, we did begin fiscal year twenty-four with a starting balance of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. To date, we have received forty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars, and we have expended two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars year to date. And those expenses are all related to the paving project at Trotter. As for the extended day program, we began the fiscal year with a balance of two hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. Our revenues as of October thirty-first were just under one hundred and fifty-five thousand, and our expenses were about two hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven balance, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which leaves us with the balance of one hundred and seventy-five dollars, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. As a reminder, we did hold our tuition rate steady for the school year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And we are seeing our, our balance creep back up again after the expenditures of the summer camp program. Any questions?
Becky, can I just make a point? So the paving project that we have two, two twenty-two, eight four, six seventy, we're still negotiating with the town, the pre-K two eights portion of that, which we believe is two hundred and three thousand dollars approximately. So that number will most likely be updated for the next report.
Roger?
Question on extended day. I'm not sure how easy it is to perform projections, either for revenue or expense, but maybe, maybe, maybe there's some degree of, of projection that can be done. Is, is it your sense in whatever you might have done that, that we have more revenues yet to collect because of the tuitions than the, than the expenses, which I guess were probably primarily a lot of salaries and things like that? So, so that, that gap is going to probably shrink as we move forward?
Yes, I agree. We are collecting tuitions on a monthly basis, and so we do see those increase. And we have run our projections in terms of expenses, and you are correct that salaries are the largest portion of those expenses. And so we know the, well, we, we project out those numbers for the rest of the year. So we do feel confident that we will end the year on a positive note again.
Thank you.
Can I just also add that I think the committee noted, the September report, the cost of running the summer program was significant. So we are also looking at creating a framework for the summer program, having some, some boundaries of what expenses should be. So we will be having a summer program, but it can't, it can't cost the amount it did this past summer. And we're working with Kerry Packard on seeing what that will look like.
Roger, just to continue answering your question around projections, one of the methods that both Becky, as well as Kerry Packard can use is they put forward a, a survey to parents and, you know, asking questions about the program in and of itself, and then also, you know, do you, would you recommend this? And also, will you be returning? So you'll, they're, they? Oh, Keith is there? Were you saying something? Okay, he's agreeing. So that, that's, that's going to be one aspect, and, and I'm, and I'm sure there's other math, more mathematical, but that will kind of give a sense from the family's perspective, that combined with the, you know, how our community rates are growing, you know, how many students we expect to have K through eighth, right? They can project a percentage from that. How many, based on past history, would kind of enroll for a program like this? And then to just kind of add on to what you were sharing, Greg, about the summer program. I know that last time we talked about the cost of that versus, versus during the school year. But I just would want to echo that, that service in our community is so valuable that when we start to kind of think about what rates and, you know, should be, should be, you know, the boundaries that you're going to place around the program. Summer is always going to be less than school year, and because there's more options, right? You can choose to go to Aruba or stay in South Borough and go to SEDP. So? Yeah, there, there you have it.
Sometimes they pretend they're in Aruba.
So I just want to be careful that we don't be too, too prescriptive on, you know, the summer vol- volume of participants versus income generated, because there are factors that is always going to be weighing against it. And that factor of just having the program to, to, it, it, it's, it's, it's more positive than maybe we're giving it credit for, so.
Yeah, and I'll just add that we agree a summer program is really important, but it can't be subsidized by the parents paying during the school year and not attending the program. So we have to find that balancing point, because if you ask a parent who doesn't use a summer program, would you like tuitions reduced? Many would say yes.
Yeah.
So we're trying to find that balance. We don't, we didn't this past summer, which is fine, because we're just, we, you know, we're, we're learning. I think we can do both. I think we can provide a wonderful summer program and find that balance and not have it be subsidized by families who use the program during the school year and not during the summer.
Point well taken. Roger, again?
Well, I mean, if you ask a taxpayer that doesn't have children in school, would you like to see the school budget reduced? You'll get a lot of people raising their hands, but I think that there's, there's, there's always more to it than that, right? There's, there's a community benefit, all right? And I don't know whether there's a community benefit to the summer program outside of just the, the community of parents that have their children in school, but there may be. So I think that, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a fair point.
I think South Borough being listed on, you know, top five places of where to raise your family a mass in the country, you know, all these, all these little pieces play a part, from the trails to the programs. So all these little pieces play a part. All right, we digress a little bit. I'll bring us back on to the agenda. So next we are going to talk about?
Can I just make one last comment?
Yes, Greg.
Not about SEDP, but about carpets. So the, this is, I think, positive that the carpets at Finn Elementary needed to be replaced, regardless of any event. So this was, this served as a catalyst for us to get rid of the carpets and replace them and get on a cycle of replacement. I know all of you have had young children at some point, and they can be messy and not kind to carpets. So I think it's just, I think it's a benefit that we got rid of the carpets, we're getting new carpets. And then we'll have a protocol for replacement over the next five or ten years. So that's my spiel about carpets.
Both my kids are very upset that they don't have carpets in their rooms, so.
I've, yes, I've had to send, send extra pillow.
Yeah.
And, and I'll just say too, that even the littlest students are noticing the changes in the school and Finn, in the Finn hallways or in their classroom. I'm just one observer, but, you know, my four-year-old says that Mr. Bubba, I think, the, his mommy, he's been very busy, you know, and so she doesn't get to see him as often in the casual collisions. And she said, but it smells really good in her classroom. So, I mean, I know the, what's happening behind the scenes, but these are from her observations, but, but I'm hearing. Okay, draft capital plan, the full year twenty-five through thirty, so the next five years.
So the capital planning subcommittee did meet to review the proposed draft, so Keith will share some highlights and provide the plan.
Yes, thank you, Greg. The subcommittee did meet, I believe it was early last week, to review the draft capital plan. First, I want to thank Brian Fantoni for his work on this plan. We did do a hard overview of it last year and really tried to encapsulate it well and get some good timelines in front of us that really itemized things that are our most important projects moving forward. We did take some time to build in some priorities as well. So the draft plan that is, was in your packet, I did get some action items from our last meeting and had to make some adjustments. So I'm going to share a slightly modified plan. We had to get some updated numbers in relation to air conditioning in the buildings, as well as adding it to the NEARI portion of the plan. So you'll see that in the plan that I'm about, about to share. But when we are looking at the priorities of, of the capital plan, I'd be remiss in not mentioning the things that we've been able to take off, specifically the Trotter paving project. I know we've had a couple of smaller conversations about that, but that was an item on our capital plan that no longer exists. And certainly the work that we're doing at NEARI and preparing for a NEARI building project is something that is anchored in this plan and will be something that has been identified once, once we move forward. So I'm going to project now a slightly modified plan, and I kept the items for air conditioning in the same fiscal year. Just modified the values and then added that to, to the NEARI school as well. Just very, here on a second. Can you, can everyone see the plan okay?
Yes.
Greg, can you give a thumbs up on that?
Yes, yes, we can see it.
Okay. So based on the, and I can't look at both at the same time, so bear with me. The only real modification I made to the Finn plan that was put in your packet is adjusting it from forty thousand dollars to forty-five thousand dollars for the air conditioning. And then that would be, in addition to the air conditioning that were already identified in Becky's previous report for the, for the mold mitigation. So this would round out the remainder of, of the facility to bring it under full air conditioning with window units where, where, where possible. The other highlight in, in this part, the Finn portion of the capital plan is certainly the roof replacement. This is something that we have identified and pushed out and will be something, hopefully MSBA does raise the level and does reinstitute the accelerated repair program. And I could see us putting in a statement of interest for the Finn roof like we have done in the past. Many of the other items on the Finn capital plan are related to kind of end of life in certain systems that we're having a difficult time getting parts for, specifically the energy management system, as that becomes, goes up in age. It has been difficult to find cards and a lot of the components that are required for that. So that's why we do have that projected out as things become greater than twenty, twenty years old. And these are, many of the other items on this did exist on last year's report, and we just, we simply moved it forward. Before I go on to Woodward, are there any questions about Finn?
I have a question. For the air conditioning, is it for the impacted classrooms or is this for the, the, the majority of the classrooms, the wing?
This will be the delta of the building. So what the number that was included in Becky's estimate is the more primary affected areas, and then this amount of forty-five thousand would be the delta to get the whole building with window units.
Okay, great. So Chelsea, remember you asked about that?
I did. And so, don't we risk, because this we wouldn't be able to purchase until July one?
Yeah.
So don't we risk, we're going, it's wet this spring, and now we're back to where we were for the cleaner part of the building in August, September. Like, is there? I guess I didn't realize we were splitting between the two fiscal years for this, and, and maybe it's, whatever happens with the insurance claim?
Yeah.
Then frees up some money so that we can accelerate this, but I'd like to see this in FY twenty-four and not twenty-five.
And I think we can, as you indicated, wait till we see insurance claim.
Yeah.
As Becky mentioned, you know, we have seventy-five thousand dollars encumbered. It might be a decision, let's hold off on the French drain and get the, the building air conditioned. So I think we have some, some opportunity. I will share too, that I know Keith's going to go through the plan. I think it's also a discussion that the subcommittee had around making sure all schools have air conditioning.
Yeah.
And, and sooner than later, so not waiting until twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight, but putting a larger capital investment in AC in all of our buildings, because again, it was Finn this time. It could be NEARI next year if we can't control the climate and dehumidification.
So can we stay on that topic for a second? Because I, I did have questions about the other schools. So let's just talk Woodward and Trotter. I think we probably would all agree that they're going to be in our inventory for schools for the foreseeable future, right? So is doing window units the best way to approach this? And, and what are, if, if there's other options, what does that look like from a capital plan perspective? And is this a short-term fix and we're planning on a long-term fix?
You want, you want to start, Greg, and I'll finish?
You can start and then I'll finish.
So we, we, we have, you know, certainly. So we, we, we have, um, you know, certainly it's, window units are not a long-term solution for any type of, um, real environmental controls. You know, we do have to look at the building more holistically, um, for, uh, for better solutions. There are, there's a lot of phenomenal technology out there, um, especially like heat pumps and, and things of that sort that could help us. I am keeping a, a close eye on the, um, energy efficiency market and different types of grants that become available, um, as, as we navigate this. But just like it would be a great solution for your home, window units aren't necessarily the best solution for a school and, but do provide us that level of comfort as, as a stopgap measure until a more complete, uh, project is done. In fact, like when we're looking at the NEARI building project, that is going to be a key, you know, measure, uh, and priority as, as we move through that. And I can see that going forward for any large-scale building project that we have.
And I would just add that if we were to look at, um, HVAC systems for our buildings, we're talking about, um, anywhere between five hundred to a million dollars for each building. So I agree, Keith, window AC units are, are a Band-Aid so we can buy some time, protect our buildings, so we can come up with longer-term solutions. I think the solar committee, um, is also looking at a more comprehensive energy efficiency plan. And I agree, Keith, I think there'll be some opportunity for, um, the district and the, and the town to invest in longer-term solutions. And if the building project does come to fruition, um, with kind of the model that we, we played out, um, we will be potentially decommissioning one building back to the town and we will be modernizing another building, um, which will have the state-of-the-art, uh, energy efficiencies.
So as part of the capital plan, at least for Woodward, Woodward and Trotter, is your intention that there would be a subsequent line item for outfitting those buildings by FY thirty?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the priority would be, short-term priority would be to get, to be able to control the environment with window units. And then what is the longer-term solution? Um, I think the state is incentivizing, um, green energy sources, so whether it's heat pumps or, um, there's all sorts of new technology, I think that would be a goal of ours.
Okay.
We also have to modernize the boiler system at Trotter. And I think in the next five or 10 years, we have to look at Woodward as well.
Yeah, that is correct, Greg, uh, you know, both of, especially the boiler at Trotter, it, it is a top priority as, as far as this, uh, capital plan is concerned. And it would be looking at the way that it is entirely engineered. Uh, the boiler setup at Trotter is very unique. I believe there are twelve or sixteen different independent units that work in unison, but it requires a lot of controls. And for all the, um, experts that have come into the building to review the space, you know, they're looking for a singular, uh, system with a redundancy, uh, going forward that the space can certainly handle, uh, that, that type of load. So boiler replacement is, uh, one of the, uh, top priorities for, um, for Trotter in the next, uh, five years. But the key for Trotter is definitely the roof replacement. Uh, similar to Finn and probably in a, a more, um, advanced situation is the Trotter roof replacement. I think the committee, as, um, many members of the committee have heard this before, uh, Trotter's roof replacement is, is necessary and we are at that point. Um, one of the things we are actively exploring is really look towards Governor Healy's budget of some grant opportunities for some infrastructure improvements. Woodward be specifically for roof replacements for the purpose of then putting solar on top of them. And Trotter has been identified by our solar consultant as a, a prime candidate for that. So the roof replacement, uh, at Trotter continues to be a top priority and we are explaining, uh, exploring some grant opportunities for the hope of doing two things at once. Uh, number one, getting the full roof replacement for both the shingled and the flat portions of the roof, as well as adding a, a solar array, which will, will be very exciting, uh, to help offset some of our en- energy costs. So we kind of, we went ahead a little bit, but if we then back up to the Woodward school, many of the things are getting to that twenty-year mark and like I mentioned about, about Finn, uh, we're, we're having a difficult time finding, uh, different parts and, and different components of those systems. Uh, that would mean necessitate the need to replace or radically refine them, um, in, in the years to come. And so those are the, the major pieces that round out, uh, Woodward and, and Trotter. One of the other things you'll see, uh, kind of beyond just a systems thing is looking at the building envelope and exterior doors. Our doos, the doors do get a lot of wear and tear and has been noticed a lot, Finn and Trotter specifically, and looking towards getting into a replacement cycle for, for some of those, um, envelope, envelope, uh, projects. Before I pop down, you know, and I know we talked about NEARI somewhat, I mean, I know we're focusing, uh, for this plan primarily on Finn, Woodward and Trotter. Is there any other, uh, questions or comments about what was in the, uh, capital plan proposal for especially Woodward and Trotter?
Yes, Chelsea.
So one of the items that's in Finn, Woodward and Trotter is the security system upgrades. And that's pretty far out and this may be a topic for a future meeting. Um, but I'm just wondering why that's so far out and, um, I just wanted to raise it. I, I'm not sure that we should talk about it here.
Sure, tho- those systems are functional, they, they work. Um, but when we're looking at the, the technology that's out there, they're not the most technologically advanced systems that we have, but they are functioning. Um, and when you can think of the technologies out there and having a full integration suite in relation to security, that's some, some exciting things are out there. Um, what's happening in the next few weeks is through the grant we were able to secure in the spring, we are doing access control replacements, um, at Trotter, uh, Finn and, and NEARI. And we are looking forward to that being done in, in, in the weeks ahead. So we all, we will be having a different interface, uh, for, uh, for people to be able to access our buildings in the three schools, which is very exciting. But it's kind of combined with all that, Chelsea, and just, there is tremendous amount of stuff out there, but for the system that we have, it does function and function well.
Okay.
So we are also looking at, um, other ways to bring security enhancements to our district. Um, one of the challenges we face is that any piece of technology we purchase has a life of five to seven years and it's obsolete. And then we're reinvesting a significant amount of money. So we are looking at some solutions where, um, some partnerships with, with firms and companies where it's a maybe a subscription fee on an annual basis, uh, but we don't own the equipment. And equipment, the equipment gets upgraded appropriately when it, when it, um, becomes obsolete. So we are looking at sustainable, longer-term, um, solutions to this. I would say that we, we have invested in security upgrades, guard access cameras and some other, um, security features and we'll continue to look for opportunities to expand those.
Good, um, question, Chelsea. Would it be more comfortable to see that that fund, those funds were dispersed over time? Like incremental improvement to security?
Yeah.
You know, maybe every two years, so you, twenty-seven, twenty-nine?
Or at least you move up a school and you do a school every year and smart it out. But I, I don't know if there's advantages though to upgrading at the same time depending on the technology change. I, I don't know, I'm just raising it as I think it's, um, I was surprised that it was so far out.
Can I follow up on that? So the middle school is actually targeted for two years before either of the elementary schools. Am I incorrect about that?
Yeah, that's right.
Or any of the elementary schools.
That's right.
So what, is there, what's the logic?
The size of that system, just because it is covering, uh, a hundred and thirty thousand square feet as compared to the other buildings. And, uh, some of the performance of the components, um, are just showing their age a little more. I think Trotter as a building gets a little more use than the other schools, especially, you know, when you're looking at the three-hundred-and-sixty-five day full cycle. So those things, those components and, um, are, are just showing their wear a little more than the other buildings.
So, 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 so Trotter is getting used by not only the students that attend it, but like all sorts of programming, et cetera, so that's one aspect. That it's proxim, Finn and, I mean, Woodward, Woodward's proximity to the, um, uh, the safety center, right? The, the police and fire, um, versus Trotter being kind of, you know?
I mean, it makes sense, but all of the, and I understand these are estimates, but all three elementary schools are two years further out than, than, uh-
Than the middle.
Yeah, I would just state that all the schools were upgraded at the same time. So they have the same card access camera systems. I think, I think there's another conversation to have around the plan, where things fit. I think as you move out, again, this is revisited every year. So really the focus is what are we gonna do next year? Like what are the priorities? And then I think there's a larger conversation around moving forward in the outward years. What are the priorities then? You know, for example, you see two-hundred-thousand dollars for the NEARI Trotter, um, lock web improvements. That might not be the school committee's priority, it might be, let's invest in security. Or, so there's a, I don't want to get too fixed on the outward years because there's a lot that can change and the lot the school committee can have control. I think focusing on what we're gonna do and what we're going to present to the capital planning committee in Southborough for fiscal year twenty-five is, is what is most important at this point in time.
And, and just to like remind us all too, the last time we met, um, the bulk of the sheet was empty, you know, just on our left-hand side, knowing what the, um, areas that we want to focus on, that this, that wasn't fleshed out. So I think that Keith has, um, brought us to a place where we could at least see all of our, the conversations and concerns that we've been reiterating, like in, on one sheet. Almost every number here has an asterisk, you know, essentially has an asterisk or should have an asterisk next to it. But our goal tonight was to, like, say that we agree that this is a draft. It encapsulates the, you know, the, the majority or, or all of what we feel are vital for each of our schools. And then it's our roles to each year, like, really go through with a fine tooth, what are we doing for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, et cetera, et cetera.
So my recommendation, what's not on here for FY twenty-five is the air conditioning of the classrooms. I would highly recommend that become a capital priority, um, moving forward. And I'll just s- state the obvious that the NEARI building project has a significant impact on what we do in the future. So for example, a NEARI building project's going to have the state-of-the-art security systems. We don't want to go too far down the road and invest in infrastructure where then it doesn't tie into what that, what that major investment will be. So I think it's also, we're in a, we're in an interesting spot where that project has significant implications around what the capital plan looks like, um, what our grade configuration looks like, what our budgets look like.
So guys, what if I make a motion that we approve this draft with the addendum to add a, um, uh,
do you need to, you need to do that at this point?
I was just gonna add the addendum for the centralized AC, right? Or, or-
Why can't you just, they have them on here, can we just? So FY twenty-five, if you don't count NEARI, only has forty thousand dollars in the capital plan? Which I would like to, if we can pay for Finn somehow now, why wouldn't we just move Woodward and Trotter's air conditioning units to FY twenty-five? Because we're such, in such a low capital year.
Keith's doing it as you speak.
Yes.
Yes, oh, oh, okay.
Is that what you were saying?
Exactly, yes, mhm.
So I don't think you, I think you could just-
Okay, so we could just do it based on the visual, um, that he's showing here.
Yeah, as, as presented.
All, um-
So, uh, mommy, just so you know what I did here, I, um, and I know Chelsea just sent, I might have missed that, it kind of went in and out. So what I did is I kept it at forty-five thousand dollars for Finn for air conditioning window units. At Finn, uh, moved up the Woodward, uh, for fifty, uh, an estimate, obviously fifty-five thousand from FY twenty-six to FY twenty-five. And then likewise moved it up to FY twenty-five for Trotter for an estimated amount of a hundred and twenty thousand. I also then moved, uh, NEARI, um, up to FY twenty-five so that all the air conditioning units, window air conditioning units are captured here, which would then give us a total of two-hundred-and-seventy-five plus the fifty-five for FY twenty-five.
Yeah, so that's what, essentially what I was going to ask us to approve. And so, um, he's done that visually. Any, any comments or questions, um, Z, Jen, um, Roger?
Okay, I have one other observation. So thinking about a potential new NEARI, that's obviously gonna be the largest expenditure outside of any of what we're looking at now. So just having that in mind, I'm, I'm concerned about probably FY twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And having that, and Keith, I know you just talked about how critical the Trotter roof is. Um, I just, I have some concerns that we're gonna, we are gonna be limited as a school committee on what we can go to the town for with asking for an astronomical number for a new school building. So how do we navigate that? And is there anything else on here that we should be prioritizing in FY twenty-five while we don't have? That we know we're gonna, and, and not the Trotter roof, but anything else that we could move up that's gonna lessen? Because I, I just think the smaller things are not gonna happen for three to four years just because of that school building. And I don't know how we deal with the roof, Keith? Because I was hoping we could just move that out, but it doesn't sound like we can.
I think it speaks to, um, MSBA's accelerated repair project program, making sure that we support that. And then I think of the, a lot of the solar initiatives that we're pursuing with Governor Healy's budget of fifty million dollars to the capital projects with a commitment to use solar on those, um, roofs, as an example, RAS will pursue. I agree with you, I think that, um, as we move forward with the NEARI building project and we potentially go to town meeting and ask for whatever amount, it's going to be significant and it's going to be hard to ask for anything more than, than that.
And so Chelsea, you're suggesting, like, ask sooner than later?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, we're at a, I mean, we're at a two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar capital request right now, key for FY twenty-five. I mean, I know we have, like, I'm just, had an observation last week at one of the schools for a door. Like, it's a problem now, so we're in FY twenty-four, it's probably been a problem. Is there, can we, can we build some, some, something into FY twenty-five so at least we can fix the things that are not working? And, and I know we probably want a longer plan for building up that amount for the, I'm just, I don't know, I'm just-
So this line that says renovation projects, all items on hold pending NEARI building committee decisions, TBD, you're suggesting that actually put an amount there and pull that amount into FY twenty-five?
So I would-
Um, no.
No, okay.
I'm suggesting that if there's something on here, and, and this may be just for the capital committee to go back with. I mean, I, in general, I'm supportive of the plan. I'm just trying to think, like, what hurdles are we gonna run into in a few years that's gonna prevent us from doing things that we need to fix?
So, uh, I'll just comment to that, um, the two major projects are the roofs. Finn roof and Trotter roof. So it could be that we move one of those roofs, most likely Trotter's, um, as a pri- So it could be that we move one of those roofs, most likely Trotter's, um, as a priority sooner than later. I think the challenge is we don't have access to MSBA's accelerated repair program. Um, Governor Healy's initiative hasn't really taken root yet, we're in the queue. Um, so I think, I think those are the two projects. Doors, um, smaller items, we do have our revolving account that we use for capital projects. For example, the paving project, that is, that is coming from revolving accounts from the district. So that is another mechanism that we can look at, for example, the door that you mentioned, or doors that you mentioned.
Yeah.
Um, so that's something to consider.
There's also a possibility, right, that, that one of these schools could be recommended to be decommissioned. So spending large amounts earlier potentially for a school that we're not gonna be.
Correct, we would wanna engage in an MSBA project on a building and then be, we, we couldn't decommission it cuz we just invested on, partnered with MSBA.
What action items could we just gi- give the capital um planning committee so that they can come back?
So I think Keith probably has a pretty good idea of things that if he looks at this, let's say we take column of FY twenty-seven and we say, okay, Keith, you're not gonna get that until FY twenty-nine, what's gonna really cause issues? And I don't know if that's fair for me to say to you, Keith, but I, I think you probably have a pretty good idea of what you can't push off minus the two roof projects.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we, it would be a um, yes, I, but we, we obviously we don't have, we don't have a crystal ball. So there are some things where we've been able to repair and keep up with the maintenance of, and then we are finding that there's some things that we're just running out of the ability to find components for. So I could have another round of conversations with Brian with that question in mind, and we could have some thoughtful debate with, with the subcommittee or, you know, bring back maybe a priority list uh back to the committee uh for, for their consideration next month, Greg. I don't know how you feel about that.
I think.
And do we necessarily have to go down it this evening? Um, we could potentially wait until those priorities are identified?
Yeah, so I think we are um penciled in for the second or third week in December. So we could work with the towns' capital planning committee to have um our meeting with the committee um.
Present or like?
Post-school committee, so we can have another school committee meeting, finalize this, have it where we feel comfortable, and then go to the town and have a meeting with the towns' capital planning committee. I think that's realistic. So I don't think there's a, we don't need to, there's no need for the committee to vote this evening.
Was um, did anyone um have any, you know, feel strongly one way or the other?
If you guys ask if we had to vote on that tonight, because it seemed like we got some moving parts here.
Yeah.
So I agree.
So I'm good with what's in FY twenty-five after Keith made us, like, I agree with everything in there.
Yes.
But do you want, would you wanna put a, a larger project in there as well?
I, I'm just con- no, I don't.
Okay.
My, I just wanna make sure that we're being thoughtful, and we are, on, I just don't wanna put us, box us into not being able to do things that we could have done earlier, that's all. And, and maybe there is nothing, and maybe we can do it with the revolving, I mean, yeah, the revolving account. Or maybe this is where this capital stabilization account comes in, so that if something does come up, then we have the ability to deal with it. I just, I just wanted to make sure that we discussed, that we don't have a big item on here that is gonna impact our ability to do other things, that's all. So I don't wanna hold this up from voting on it, if, if, you know, the capital subcommittee and the administration are good with it. I just wanted to raise it as a question.
So what about this proposal, um, I'll come to you, Roger, that we do um vote on it, cuz I don't keep. And now we've already voiced the action item that we would like the subcommittee to meet amongst themselves and come back with um any further thoughts at it, so that we can then speak with the, have that, have ourselves kinda organized before we go back to the actual, the town with this. There's minimal change that I think will happen between our um approval of this today versus next meeting. That's my second, and your thoughts, Roger?
Well, I'm just gonna follow that through. So practically speaking, when do, when, when do um, when does this proposed capital plan go to the town capital committee?
I think, I wanna say December.
Calendar-wise.
Um, sixteenth, I don't know why.
Mid, mid-December, I, I.
Okay, so, so we will in fact have another meeting.
Correct, the first week of December.
And I, I certainly personally wouldn't have any objection to voting whatever we wanna vote tonight, but we can always amend it.
Based on any additional feedback that Keith and the subcommittee come with.
Comes back uh before it goes to the town.
And.
But it could be a second.
You know, FY twenty-five is a priority, that's what we're really focused on this year. We have time and we probably need to get a better, you know, context of kind of the town's data, debt, and when debt will fall off, when debt will come on, and then maybe have a closer partnership with the town in thinking about some of these items.
Okay, let's pause then. So, uh, you said, uh, let, guys wanna pause on this and come back? Okay, I'm gonna nod of the head from Z, um, Jen?
I'm, I'm fine with voting it.
I think you should make a motion.
What'd you say?
You should make a motion.
Okay, so I move that um the school committee approves the um FY twenty-five draft capital plan as amended this evening.
And I second the motion.
Is there an amount that's gonna be a part of this motion?
Yeah, um, yes.
What is, what is that?
Two hundred and.
Two seventy-five?
Plus the um fifty-five.
So what's that?
For nearie.
So two twenty, two thirty, three thirty?
For three hundred and thirty thousand.
Two thirty.
Seventy-five.
Do you have those cells highlighted, Keith? Can you just?
The, the two twenty, the two seventy-five, and then we, what we did with the plan with the draft is we separated out all the nearie stuff. Um, so it'd be the two seventy-five plus fifty-five.
Gotcha.
So does this mean we do not wanna discuss adding any additional projects to twenty-five?
I think that, I think we still gave the directive to the capital subcommittee. If, if there was something that they wanted to accelerate, I think they'd always take it up again, but at least they have what they, what they need. And then if there's anything else, I think we can amend it. Is that where you were going?
That's where I'm going.
Okay.
So we had a motion put forward by Chelsea, second by Kamali. Um, uh, all in favor, since we're all here. Um, there's two, three, four, uh, five unanimous, okay?
Thank you. So also in your packet for the superintendent's report, um, is the budget, FY twenty-five budget priority document. And I'll turn it over to Kamali.
All right, um, so if we turn to our FY twenty-five budgets, um, priorities, we discussed this in our last meeting and gave ourselves the action to review them um, and kinda provide any additional feedback on where we thought that they, for, for, for lack of a better word, would, would rank. Um, I think they, well, I won't say I think, but based on the um responses seen, um, it seems that maybe that thinking at the time was ambitious and maybe not the route we wanna use to be able to actually uh say what the priorities are per se. We would need, we would need more than just, um, you know, we would need every part, every person to participate in the ranking and then almost kinda like cross, cross compare that to say, you know, the volume of folks that voted one item as number one versus number two, number three. And so just in preliminary review, it did not bold the results that we wanted it to, 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 to vote. So my suggestion is that, um, you know, I know it's getting late in the evening, but we could use this opportunity to um share any comments that we have verbally around what's listed, if you have your handouts or have it on your screen. Um, and then also, we can also provide Greg with an action item to maybe um share with us the value, like dollar value, the monetary impact of each of these um priorities. I think once we see like, oh, for the suggested priority of, um, um, let me think of one. Um, there, there may not be a monetary impact for a particular pri- priority. So, and then there for some, the monetary impact might be, okay, hiring staff, right? Here we go, two hundred K versus one that is um pursue grant opportunities. Well, we're gonna pursue grant opportunities regardless. So by um maybe taking another, um, taking this back again to kinda get that response of, let's put a dollar value next to each of these uh listed priorities. That might help us to then align, okay, for the, for the, the, for, for funding, which one should go in what order. I think what we were doing before, we're kinda giving our, um, you know, it was just like our individual thoughts on what was um important or ranked in order to the, to the district, but not looking at, well, you can do the most expensive thing as well as the thing that costs nothing simultaneously. Um, so that was a long statement, but um basically I put the poll back in your court, Greg.
So I think that, um, I think, um, you, you said it well, I think the task at the central office will be to create costs to each of the budget priorities, we'll create a menu. As we move through the budget process, we can see what each budget priority impact would have on the overall context of the larger budget. So again, it's a process, so having that menu will allow the school committee to make um decisions as we move through the process with more information.
Did I, let me know if that was clear, if I ran us in circles. I think the good thing is that we have the verbiage, right? We have the, the meat of what it is that we want to implement. And by seeing um it laid out with the view that I'm proposing that Greg does, we'll actually um be able to um just make better decisions and know what the actual impact is gonna be, Roger.
So to paraphrase then, um, you're asking the district to assign a, a cost, uh, budget impact cost to each of these, um, so then we can look at that as additional information about them.
Yes.
That's fair?
Correct, and we're moving away from, uh, you know, tiering them as number one through ten and looking at it more as a, as each of them move, what is the um value, the empirical value that's assigned to it? All right, so with that said, um, there's really no vote there, just like a discussion. Um, if, let's, when we get to the point where we talk about what we want on our future agendas, we could bring this back into our future agendas.
Did we, did we vote these priorities as priorities without, and then, and then it was, did we do that at the last meeting?
We revised the.
We revised the list. Um, do we, do we need to at least identify these as priorities? And there could, still can be some future discussion as, about the, um, you know, prioritizing them. In other words, as items, do, in other words, is the district, with district like a vote as to whether these are the items that we have in our budget priority list, without necessarily being able to prioritize them yet?
I would be willing to offer that, sure.
Yeah, I would.
Let's do that.
I don't see the budget priorities changing from this meeting to next meeting. You know, the vision really that Kamali's speaking of is, you know, we're going to put together a preliminary budget. The school committee's going to have an opportunity to react to that budget and then take this menu and say, okay, these are the three things we wanna add to the budget and what's the impact? So I think voting these tonight would be helpful to um our internal process.
So I'd like to move that we identify the priorities as amended on this list as the school committee, as the FY two thousand twenty-five school committee budget priorities.
Second.
So moved by Roger and second by Jen, um, all in favor? All right, um, now let's talk about the calendar for said budget.
Yeah, so our running record of um budget meetings and upcoming meetings, I, I will share that we do have an um important meeting this Thursday, and that is the chair of the select board, the chair of the school committee, I believe Roger, will be attending those meetings. Um, the town finance director and town administrator, um, Becky and I will be meeting just to talk about um the budget process for fiscal year twenty-five, sharing information, and, and we will be having these meetings beginning Thursday, once a month, just to make sure everyone has good information and we're on the same page.
Roger has a question?
Just to confirm, it is Thursday?
Yes.
Because it bounced around.
Thursday, yes.
All right.
Seven thirty.
Okay. Um, and by the way, thanks for representing us on that. Um, the next thing that we have is, um, there's no new updates on educational policy. Um, no updates at this time for um any new policies that need to be distributed. But there's a personnel item, so let's look at the personnel report.
So we have three appointments and um one retirement. So again, we'll have an opportunity to celebrate our retiree or retirees at the end of the school year and thank them for their uh years of dedicated service.
Um, and I always add at those retirement cer- ceremonies that, you know, um, we appreciate folks just sticking with us through the twenty twenty through twenty, through our current cycle and um, um, you know, we wish them well in whatever their future endeavors are. Uh, because if there was ever a time that was challenging, it was twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two. Um, so communications, um, story bridge update, um, Stephanie or Greg? And I can give a, my perspective as an attendee as well?
Do you have um a storyteller who you favor?
Um, there were eleven um participants in the story bridge. Um, one of them I am very closely related to, uh, my husband participated. Um, and I think he might still be on a high from that experience because it was something that, um, he didn't envision doing. Um, and it was really a stretch out of his comfort zone. And you would never know it as a participant, as a, as a, as an observer, that any of these um speakers were not prof- you know, storytellers and had not been to uh multiple, multiple courses. So, um, they were vulnerable and they shared, um, I, I thank the story bridge organizers, Jen, um, DeLeon and Adam Stumacher for really crafting and helping them kind of determine what it is to share. And then they brought us as the audience through a wave of emotions. So we went through, you know, um. So we went through, you know, um, there was laughter, there was concern, there was sadness, there was, you know, um, reflections of grief and reflections on global conflict that's happening. And I, that, I'm sure that was very intentional, the flow of the evening. So as one of the people that brought this to our district for something to participate in, I'll just tell you that it has improved just from previous year to now. Um, the attendance has been great. I think that this year's program ran, um, very smooth. Um, and we are, I'm hopeful that it's something that continues. The, the feedback that was received that night and then also through the, um, a barcode, uh, you know, feedback that they got that same night has all been positive. And, you know, I, I just, it's just a special thank you to, to them for doing that in our community and for us as a district, seeing the value in having that here. Um, so that, that's, that's my reflection on the night. And I can't wait to see how the young people that are in our, that were in the audience, there were a lot of children, um, ranging from, you know, uh, kindergarten to teen. They are going to one day be the ones telling that story and say, I remember the first time that I watched this. So that's, um, I hope that I'm still around to, to see that. It's going to be great. Um, Stephanie?
Well said. No, it's, it's a really special night and, um, uh, we had, in addition to Kamali's husband, we had one of our educators who participated. We had two students who participated. We had members of, um, from both towns. Um, all different, all different kinds of diverse, um, experiences and perspectives. So it was again, a night of kind of connecting and getting to know each other better. Um, we did recently debrief with, um, Jennifer DeLeon and Adam Stumacher. And, you know, they're very thoughtful partners in doing this work. And so we're continuing to brainstorm ideas. Um, and we'll be bringing it back to the Coalition for Equity as well of how do we continue this tradition? How do we grow the tradition? How do we get an even broader audience to experience, um, you know, what those of us who were there experienced? I think the, um, so, so we're, we continue to work on that and are excited about the future.
And I would just add that I unfortunately was not able to attend the evening. But I did watch the video, so if people were not able to attend the event, definitely take forty-five minutes or an hour of time to watch the storytellers. It's still very powerful. And Kamali, you mentioned your husband being on cloud nine. So some of the conversations we had is how can we continue it? It's a tremendous amount of effort for those storytellers to craft their stories and tell their stories. So can we make it an opportunity where their stories are told in?
Other forums.
Other forums. You know, for example, we talked about, you know, we have eight hundred, uh, employees return at the start of the school year. Could we provide an opportunity to have some of the storytellers share their stories then? So we're thinking creatively around how do we expand this experience for more people?
Yep.
Be great to have like the high school students come to the middle school and tell sto, you know, do something within the schools. So, you know, the students, the stories were very powerful. And my daughter, uh, I attended with my daughter who's just turned thirteen. And this was kind of the first year I think she was really able to like sit and appreciate them. So, um, she like, the whole car ride home, she was like, well, I like, this was my favorite story. And it brought up a lot of discussion around different, like, identity. And, um, so I thought it was great.
And it, just to build off of what Greg was saying, we did, I knew one, we shared the video, um, not only with the community, but also with our faculty. And, um, there was one teacher who took the forty-five minutes to watch and then wrote to us um, about what a huge impression it made on her. And, um, so part of our brainstorming is, yes, about maybe having storytellers tell their stories again, but also how can we use the video? Um, what are some different opportunities we can have to show some of the clips? Um, it doesn't even have to be the whole forty-five minutes. And continue to get that connection and that getting to know our community opportunity out of that resource as well.
So let's just, you know, continue to move that forward. Um, I'm looking forward to see how that progresses over the years. Moving forward, we have action on the minutes. There were two, um, minutes that we got in our packet. The open meeting minutes from October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Um, I'm, I'll make a motion to, um, approve the open meeting minutes of October eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Did you make a motion?
I did.
Yeah.
Um, thank you, Chelsea, for, um, second. Um, any questions, comments, discussion? All right, seeing none? Um, all in favor? Unanimous? Um, we have the executive session meeting minutes of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. At this time, I think we're ta, making a motion to hold those until, yeah, September. That's not ready to release yet, right? So I will make that, yes.
Those are, those are to be retained?
Yes.
Yes. Um, so I will make the motion to retain the executive session meeting minutes of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, uh, second by Z, I, I heard Z. Um, all in favor? That's unanimous. All right, so thank you for that, action on the minutes. Any agenda items for next month that we know of that right now? We have MSBA, we have the standing items that are there, but any new things? It'll be, um, the first week of December, any things that we can think of that would have dealt it between now and then?
So what about budget?
Preliminary budget presentation.
And I assume there'll be a budget subcommittee meeting? Between now and that?
We just mapped it all out today.
Oh, okay. Great.
But yes.
Okay. Roger?
I'm, I'm sorry, did you say there'll be a Capitol?
Uh, no, by the budget, I did subcommittee.
Budget subcommittee meeting before that meeting, so whether from, okay.
Yeah.
So what, what the committee has done in the past, and I'm not sure if, if the committee would like to continue with this, is having a special meeting instead of just having a few people dive into the preliminary budget, having a special meeting where everyone can participate. Um, if that is the will of the committee, that would just help me plan with Cheryl around trying to scheduling the meeting.
Okay. Yeah.
That's, um, okay.
All right, so, um...
And, um, just one other thing, um, so, um, the multilingual, um, learner presentation in December.
We'll bring that back next. So, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off and just for those listening, so yes, we'll have a multilingual language, um, learner update for next meeting.
Can we get an update on transportation?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you that.
Okay.
Do you want to look at Capitol again?
Yes.
Just to make sure that we're... Good?
Um, key, well, I'll, I'll, I think that's, we'll, we'll, I'll pause with those. Um, if you think of anything else, we'll send those to you by email, Greg. So now it's, uh, eight fifty-one. I'm going to open the floor for public comment. And we have one, uh, for public comment.
You actually can come sit here because the microphone...
Hi, people on Zoom. So hello, I'm Jessica Gallagher. Um, I actually know quite a few of you already from various means. Um, and I'm sorry to be coming in at the end of a long meeting, so I, I appreciate your time. Um, I'm here as a parent. I have two children in Southborough Elementary Schools. Um, and I just basically came, I'm, I'm going to open my notes if you don't mind.
Yeah, Jessica.
Um, just because it's, I'm a teacher, my brain is fried at this point on a Monday. Um, so I have spoken with several bus drivers in the district recently, um, just that I know from, from various places or run into out in public and whatnot. And a lot of them are longstanding, very loyal, outstanding employees, um, of NRT, of course, who we contract with for busing. And, um, I had heard kind of people who were willing to say like, I'm going to have to look for another job. And I'm like, well, why is that? Because a lot of them have been driving, you know, for many years, not just a couple. Um, so kind of getting to what you were saying about people who've been loyal through twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, the bus drivers are certainly part of that, um, situation as well. Um, and it's, it's essentially because, um, they feel that they are not currently making a living wage, given inflation. A lot of them have multiple jobs already. And so, um, they are feeling the effects, um, when they try to pay their bills and when they try to afford things for their own kids and things of that nature. And, um, I would just hate to, you know, lose out on people who know our kids, who get them to school safely. Um, I'm sure, I know that you've all been talking about transportation and will continue to do so this year. And I don't pretend to know the ins and outs of, of how often you negotiate or, or whether there's other transportation options out there. I do know, um, that a lot of school districts in this area use NRT and, um, and that in our school district, there's been some difficulties with routes that don't have drivers and parents having to pick kids up and, and things of that nature because there hasn't been any other option. And I would hate to see for that to become a more widespread problem. I realize you're bound by, by time and money and, and things of that nature when you're negotiating with outside entities. Um, uh, but I, I, and I, but I feel like some of these folks could leave us sooner rather than later. And that would be a real, a real loss, um, in terms of people that know our kids and again, do an outstanding job at what they do, but also in terms of logistics for the, the kids, the parents and, and anyone else who is, um, you know, interacting with school age kids that use the public school system. So anyway, I had sent an email, uh, this morning, so, um, it, I don't have a whole lot to add to what I've already sent to many of you, but I, I did feel like it was important to come and express it in person um, because I had heard it firsthand from, from people who work here and love this community and also are driving to Algonquin. It's not just our Southborough little town that's impacted here. So I felt like I should come and say something. So thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Roger?
Well, I'd just like to say, as you know, this isn't a dialogue time, but, uh, I did see the email. Kamali had sent it out to all of us and I thought it was, uh, very well written.
Oh, thank you. I'm an English teacher, so. I better be able to communicate.
Do you agree?
No, no, no.
Just don't leave it at will?
Quite all right.
Can I just comment to, so typically we don't engage in a dialogue, but I can share some facts that NRT, um, last year, um, paid their drivers for a certain amount of time. That time was reduced this year without a conversation with, with us. It has impacted some of our longstanding bus drivers who have been loyal to the district in the communities of Northborough, Southborough and Algonquin. We have inquired on multiple occasions with, with NRT's management around the shift. We've also shared our concern that you're short drivers. This is not a time to be, um, creating another whole ripple effect of, of less drivers. So we are in conversations with NRT about this. Keith has had many inquiries. I am sitting down with Keith and Becky as well with NRT management, um, to discuss the business operation. And this is one of those topics that we will be adding to, um, the conversation in person.
Can I, I'm trying to figure out how not to have like a dialogue back up, but, um, is there a way, you know, because there are concerns that have been brought up on like social media and other play, and in our emails about this issue around bus drivers and transportation. Is there a way for the district to, and we talked about it la, last meeting two months ago, but, uh, to outline from the district perspective, some of the limitations and restrictions that we, that the district has in being able to respond to some, because I think there's a assumption there that we have a lot of control potentially over some of these issues. And I think, like you said, we can potentially advocate, but there's limitations around what the district actually can do around these. And I don't know if there's some way of releasing that information to the...
Yeah, I mean, we definitely can share, you know, the experience, um, that parents are living and what we're trying to do to, to make it better. And ultimately, we sign the contract. We, as the district, is responsible for getting kids to and from school safely. So that's something we take very seriously and, but we can, we can send out a, a communication. I think parents are just very frustrated and fed up. It's November sixth and it doesn't, it hasn't gotten better for families when we would expect it to. Um, so we can do that. I'm not sure it's going to help families who still are just satisfied with, with the service.
Yeah, and I think just even around like conversations like the bus driver salary, right? Like how much the district can potentially impact that is like...
It's limited. And you're right, I think parents don't understand. Like they don't understand that it's not us paying them, like this district.
Well, um, you know, in lieu of us kind of, um, debating, hashing this out here, I mean, I thank you, Jessica, for, you know, sharing.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate it.
Except I know it's late at me, so you stay later. So thank you.
Transportation is one of the items on our, for the next meeting also. We should actually thank you for staying up late to come because, uh...
Well, um, I will, uh, accept a motion, well, I'll make a motion that we, um, close, uh, today's meeting as of, uh, eight fifty-nine PM.
Second.
Second by Roger. All in favor? All right, it's unanimous. Let's have a good night.